Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes, Counselor Depeña.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez, Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please note that I’m Counselor Estela Reyes as well as Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez excuse themselves for tonight’s meeting. And please join me for a moment of silence. Now please join me for the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselors, we have a set of minutes to be approved. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes from November 21st, 2017, and December 5th, 2017?
The move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there’s none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Public participation. Please note that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. When you hear the first bell, that means that you have spoken for two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, that means that your time is up. Please identify yourself with name and address for the record, please. First person is Mr. Tom Dugan.
Thank you, Counselors. Tom Dugan, 75 Main Street, North Andover. We were having a hard time hearing you. I think you just need to speak into the microphone. I’m here tonight, it’s been a long time since I’ve been at this podium. It’s been a long time since I’ve addressed you. I know all of you, but it’s been a long time since I’ve been here to address you officially. I’m here because, two nights ago, as I drive through the street to chase police calls and fire calls as part of my job, I’ve noticed some of the needs that the homeless have had, and I’ve had conversations with them, and I’ve even tried to help a couple of them out. Two nights ago, there was a young kid, he was probably about 28-years-old, down at Pemberton Park where the, closest to the falls, where the new little benches are that they have. It was 2:45 in the morning, around there. His family had thrown him out, he had no place to go, and he went to the Daybreak Homo Shelter. They were full. It was 17 degrees out. He had no place else to go. About a year ago, a guy was walking around Boston, and he was, had a camera in his shoe, and he was taking pictures up girls’ skirts, and the cops picked him up, but they couldn’t charge him because it wasn’t against the law. Within 24 hours, the House, the Senate unanimously passed a bill to make that against the law, and the governor signed it. Why do I bring that up in connection to this? Because it woke me up for the first time that government doesn’t have to move as slow as it does. We’ve all become accustomed to government moving as slow as it does. But when government officials are really motivated to do something, like they were in that case in Boston last year, boy, they move lightning-fast to get something done. So I’m here today to maybe motivate you. When Mike Sullivan, the Republican, was mayor of this city, and it became under 32 degrees, and it became officially freezing, he would open the Arlington School so that when there was an overflow at the Daybreak Homo Shelter, those people weren’t stuck on the street with no tent, no sleeping bag, no blanket. They would have a warm place to go. He used auxiliary police officers so that it didn’t strain the budget to at least go there and keep an eye on them. I’m asking you to keep in mind what happened in Boston last year with the state legislature as you start to think about how to fix this problem. Because government officials, I think, too often think, “How do we solve the root of the problem, which takes forever?” And in the meantime, there’s a guy right now, sleeping over on that bench. And on my way here, I went through the bus station, and there’s three guys waiting for the buses to stop coming through so they can set up their blankets. Tonight, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan.
So I’d like to ask you guys to please put an item on the agenda next week.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan.
So that I can have a little bit more time to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan.
And I’ll be happy to, and I’ll be happy to work with you to solve this problem.
Thank you, Mr. Dugan.
You’re welcome. Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Francis Tineo.
My name is Francis Tineo. I live in 8 Candle Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. My reason for me being here is because I’m here to speak in regards to the way that the tow trucks working in Lawrence are actually stealing from us in Lawrence, you said. On September 23rd, I had a big truck, and it was in a location, it was actually in the city’s property. It was between Hampshire Street and Newbury Street. The truck was there because it needed to be repaired, because it wasn’t running correctly. So the police department, this was one of the trucks that was picked up that night because the police department did some sort of. The truck was registered with its plate. And the insurance had expired. When I went to the tow truck company to ask for the vehicle. They gave me an obstacle, and they told me that if I didn’t have insurance, I could not get my vehicle back. So I gave the keys of the vehicle to the tow truck company. And I brought to knowledge the president of the city council, Candace Vasquez. I went to the police department and told them also what they had told me. I went to the city attorney and I made him aware as well. The city attorney gave me a card. Telling me that it is illegal for them to do that with me. Today, it’s been three months that the truck is pretty much lost. I think it’s, they’re stealing. Because if the car doesn’t have insurance. There’s no law that will prohibit me that I cannot pick up that truck and just put it in my house until I. I’m here because the city attorney actually told me to come, you know, he suggested me coming forward to you guys, and I think it’s time for you guys to take a measure in this problem that we have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next person is Mr. H. Mali.
Good evening, honorable members. Last meeting of this year in the wonderful season of hope. We, the citizens in the season of hope, demand of you and Mayor Rivera, support our police officers and our senior officers’ union. With the best Christmas wishes to Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick, he has done excellent job. Merry Christmas to this great leader. Merry Christmas to all Lawrence Police Department. We support your union 100 percent. Mayor Rivera, in the season of joy, must sign our police officers’ contract. With the best Christmas wishes to our best hard-working DPW workers, we support your union. Our public school, with the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, is the best public school in the nation. With the best Christmas wishes to Honorable Superintendent Raleigh. Thank you for everything you have done for Lawrence Public School. The best Christmas wishes to our teachers and their union. Without our wonderful teachers and their union, there won’t be any turnaround plan. In our city, only our teachers’ union has contract. Million thanks to Honorable Superintendent Raleigh and Frank McLavon for our teachers and their union and their contract. In the holy season of the joy, we demand of you support our firefighters and their union. Remember your campaign promise. Save Florence, prosper Florence, only possible for you to support our awesome police officers and their union, our firefighters and their union, and our hard-working firefighters. Thank you for, and Merry Christmas. Mayor Rivera needs to sign our police officers’ contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mali. Next person is Dora Avalo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dora Avalo. I’m coming from representative, from my mom, the names, Edina Castillo Sanchez. Because I come in and discuss this because my mom is, my mom has a very difficult health condition. She is affected from diabetes, hypertension, and dementia, osteoarthritis, and different more conditions. She lives with me in my own house in 18, at 18 Felix Street in Lawrence. Then she has, she can’t take some sleep or take, she can’t take some, take a nap or take a, take a rest or can’t sleep because everybody, a lot of people is doing a lot of noises and harm in, in front, in beside my house. You know, it is very difficult for condition for my mom because she is, her age has, she has 82-years-old, and it is, we have trying for a difficult, difficult condition here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avalo. I just wanted to point out, you do have, we have a document that we will be discussing later.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I would like to get it one-handedly signed prohibiting some noises and harm in front and beside my house.
We will discuss that shortly, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next person is Anna Medina.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Anna Medina, and I live on 134 Marston Street. Mr. Modesto Maldonado, I am here to thank you for your service. Service to our city. I want you to know that all of us in the city are very proud of you. We are also totally appreciate the job that you have done representing us in the city. Again, thank you, and good luck in your new endeavors. But I want you to know, we are very proud, and we will miss you. Thank you. Mrs. Myra Ortiz, thank you very much also for your service and representing our city. And Mrs. Alvarez Rodriguez, who is not present, I want to also thank her for her service to our city and to representing us. Thank you. Good luck. We’ll miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, Counselors. Name’s Dick Russell, reside 34 Cross Street in the city. Taking up on what Tom Dugan said about the homeless, 40-years ago, I spent three years straight working in the subway system at night, surveying it. It is heartbreaking to see homeless people curled up on air vents. It’s a shame, in 40-years, nothing has been done to do it. Now, first, I understand the city’s got about 14 million bucks in free cash. Why don’t you spend it on something practical, like shelter for the homeless in the winter instead of wasting it on ego trips for elected officials to brag about? And for that matter, why can’t you throw some of the money around at the homeless or the less fortunate veterans? Remember, if it wasn’t for veterans, you’d be, you wouldn’t be living in this lavish lifestyle, and you’d probably be speaking a foreign language. Next, I realize that three of you will be departing from the council and maybe won’t ever have to listen to my words of wisdom ever again. Let me say this about that. Several of you have differed by 180 degrees from some of my conservative, rather conservative political points of view. With that being said, I will begrudgingly acknowledge the job that you were attempting to do in order to improve the seven square miles that’s called Lawrence. I realize that the three of you gave up a lot with your interactions with your family, your friends, and your jobs to do what you thought was best for the city. Just remember the words of Woody Guthrie, “This land is your land, this land is our land. This land was made for you and me.” For your work, I admire you, I salute you. For the dedication to the city. In closing, I would like to misquote Michael Corleone from The Godfather about my actions before you and the council. It’s nothing personal, Counselors, strictly business. I wish you luck in the future. As always, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next person, Debo Brown.
Good evening, Counselors. Good evening. Thank you for having me and allowing me the opportunity to speak with you. The address that I’m coming from is 599 Canal Street. And sorry to be an echo in the room, but a topic of great discussion that needs to happen in this city amongst all of you folks is the subject of homelessness in our cities. I actually brought a gentleman with me today. Ray, if you may, can you stand up, sir? If you may, can you lift up your shirt, sir? Now, I would like the council to pay close attention to that scar. That scar is very important for you to understand what we need to speak about. This gentleman was released from the hospital a few nights ago. My wife personally called Daybreak Shelter and asked if he could go there. Subsequently, the gentleman was told no, that he couldn’t because of past issues or whatever the excuse was. And at this point, it doesn’t make any sense. The city of Lawrence continues to dump money into these homeless shelters that do not provide the necessary services. If any of you guys can explain to me a rational excuse why this guy had to sleep on the floor with open, fresh wounds, 42 staples in his stomach, then I would love to hear it. But if you can’t, then I beg you guys to relook at the business practices of our homeless shelters and how exactly these funds are being spent in our city. If they are not being spent correctly and applied to the certain conditions and cases that they need to be, then maybe we need to look at that and reallocate those funds to a better source that can provide better services to those that need them. In closing, that’s all I want you guys to think about. I’m not telling you what to think, I’m not telling you how to rule, I’m just asking you to think. That is a problem. You guys have the power to address it. I understand I have 30 seconds, so I will close it out and again, be the echo in the room. I wanted to thank Mr. Maldonado for his many years of expertise that he brought to the city council. I truly am sad to see you go. I think that the council is losing a very knowledgeable man on the board, as well as Myra Ortiz. Myra, you know I have nothing but the greatest of love and admiration for you. And I hope that even though you are not going forward with the city council, I hope that you continue to be involved in our community activities to help better our city.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Counsel Vice President Mark LaPlante.
Thank you much, very much, Council President. I just wanted to share with you a project that I’m working on and ask for maybe some involvement for you on this project. 100-years ago, there were men from our city that started to die in World War I. And in the positions where we sit now, city councilors 90-years or so ago decided to dedicate streets, corners, buildings, bridges, and buildings after these individuals. And the project that I’m working on is to bring to attention those people that our predecessors decided was important enough that out of the 180 or so individuals that died in World War I from Lawrence, that these 32 receive some sort of recognition. Oftentimes, we walk by these parks, we walk on these bridges, we pass by these street corners, and we see these names, but these names mean very little to us because we were really never really taught what these names mean, who these people were, and what the sacrifice they did during this thing. So, over the course of the next year, I am going to be, on the date, on the 100-year anniversary of the day that these individuals died, I’m producing and putting together a little bit of information regarding that individual. Tomorrow is the first one. Guy’s name is Joseph Ravitch. He came here from Russia in 1895, lived on Alder Street in 1910 with his parents. He had a new rug store on Park Street that he owned and operated, and in December 13th, 1917, enlisted into the United States military, went down to a place called Fort Slocum, which is right outside in New York, on Long Island, it’s on an island, and seven days later, he died. Now, 15 other people died from the city of Lawrence prior to that guy. Why did the city council 90-years or so ago decide to give this guy a bridge on Hampshire Street near Central Catholic? Only reason I can think of is because this is the only, those other people were in foreign militaries. There were Laurentians that served in the Canadian Expeditionary Force, the French military, and also the British Expeditionary Force. But Ravitch, he was with the American Expeditionary Force. And so, he was the first guy who was part of the American Expeditionary Force that died from the city of Lawrence, even though he didn’t make it across. But our city council predecessors decided to name something after him. I invite each one of you to join with me as I go through this next year of the 32 guys, men, no women in this particular case, maybe we can change that in the future, but 32 men who, who made the ultimate sacrifice, and I invite each one of you to be guest narrators with me and be a part of this process. And I’m going to also invite previous city councils as well, maybe of the mayors as well, to be a part of this.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Next up on the side of the street is Council President Candace Vasquez. Mr. Vasquez, you have the floor.
Good evening, Counselors. Candace Vasquez, City Council President, on every side of 681 Lowell Street. And I am here today to also say thank you to Counselors Modesto Maldonado as well as Counselor Ortiz for the service that they have given to the city of Lawrence. I am honored to have worked with both of you in the last couple of years, and I know that the city has been much better because of the service that you’re putting. It is a strong sacrifice that each of you have done, whether it is with your own lives, families. Oftentimes, we, you know, we have other responsibilities that we have put aside to be able to do this work. It is not an easy thing to do, and I can speak on experience, so I greatly appreciate the work that you have done. And on behalf of the city council, I am now presenting this token of appreciation to you guys. So this is a plaque for City Councilor Modesto Maldonado, who served as a district seat councillor from 2010 to 2012, a city council at large from 2014 to 2018, served as council president from 2014 to 2016. Thank you, Counselor Maldonado, for your service.
We also have another plaque for Counselor Myra Ortiz, who served as a district eight councillor from 2016 to 2018. Thank you, Counselor. So, Counsel Maldonado, Counsel Ortiz.
Just a few words. I’m really grateful to the citizens of Lawrence for giving me this great opportunity of serving them and doing what I thought has always been best in the interest of the taxpayer. I know that at times I have been combatant, and sometimes I have been the conscience of the city council. And I hope that the fact that I’m not going to be with the city council, that somebody will pick up the flag for me and will carry that flag on to continue serving the people the right way and to be the conscience of the city council. Thank you, all the citizens of Lawrence.
Thank you so much. If my children would join me?
They’re just thrilled. This is for you.
And that’s all I have to say. I did this for them. I did this for them.
Counselors, we also had a plaque for Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, who unfortunately is unable to join us today, but I do wish her success in her future endeavors, and I also appreciate the service that she has provided to the city of Lawrence. We are grateful for all of the hours that she dedicated to us as a city councillor. Thank you, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselors, I’m opening the floor for any of you who wish to say anything at this point. Counselor Maldonado, Counselor LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Council President. Real quick, and I know we have a very full agenda, but I don’t want this time to go forward without officially recognizing those three members and their service to our city. Many have already spoken quite eloquently about their service. With Counsel Nilka Alvarez Rodriguez, I served two states with her council president. I served 10, I think 10 or 12-years ago, we served together, and then again, another stint in this past year or two, term or two. And what she brought to the table, I think, was a certain conscience, a certain, she really wanted the individuals back home and constituents to understand each one of these things that we were dealing with. And I think that was a real strength of hers, that she was able to make this more of an educational for, that the government, our government, was in a place where people could understand what was going on and made it understandable for the people that we represent. Counsel Maldonado, it was a gentleman, it is a gentleman who have had a chance to serve through two different stints. A man of his word. He said he was going to serve one term, kept to his word, stepped down, and then came back to run and to win. In this past term, he changed roles. The first term that he was in, he was someone that really tried to pursue a lot of great things for the city, and in the second stint, he was a gentleman that played an important role, which is to make sure that we had a thoughtful discussion and present other sides of the discussion. And that’s an important role in the city because if we just said yes to everything without thinking about the other side, we’d be doing a disservice to our constituents. So I want to thank Counselor Maldonado for his service in both of those terms, and for being a man of his word, and man of integrity, and a gentleman when we’re inside this room. Counselor Ortiz is someone who has not been with us very long, but her short stint was quite dynamic, as someone who has had the ability to really pause and really challenge this council on its decisions, and really presented for us, again, some thoughtful reflections as to whether or not what we were voting on was really, truly the right thing, and provided that prism, that optic that was so important. And I think that that is something that we are going to miss, and my hope is that either one of us or one of the new councilors steps up to fulfill that role, because it’s an important role that challenges the council. So I wanted to thank her very, very much for her service, and I know these folks are not taking off, Council President, they’re just moving on. We’re here very short times, and they may not be in this chamber every two weeks, but I do believe that they are Laurentians at heart, and they want the best for our city, and that there are other ways besides being on the city council to make our city better. And I’m sure they will find that way to do that. So thank you for this time, Council President.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President. Any other counselors? Counsel Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, as Mr. Brown had previously said, echo what we’ve already heard this evening and has appreciation for those counselors that will be retiring at the end of this calendar year. You know, I’m. You know, I knew each one of them differently before we individually got here. Council Alvarez Rodriguez and I, the longest, we served together last decade on the City Council. And oftentimes, we would publicly disagree on a vote, but, and we would have very spirited conversations. And at the end of the day, I always respected her position because they were well-rooted in what she believed in that night on that vote. And I want to thank her for that, because she often, again, even in disagreement, I would see things differently after having conversations with her, both privately and publicly. Council Maldonado probably doesn't remember, we met in 2009 or thereabouts, and I was running for office on a street corner with a mutual friend of ours, and he came up to me, wished me well. He says, "I'm not with you, but I wish you well." And people, I, I didn't say it'd be funny, it is funny, but he was always straight with me, always straight with me. He was the first one that I recall reaching out to me when I wanted to come back on the council, and we spent some time together, and I appreciated that. And he's another one, opened my eyes when we could disagree. He's a voice that would be heard. And lastly is Myra. Myra and I, we go back to our kids, and you know, somewhat the reason why I, I wanted to speak this evening, each one of them individually, but Myra's kids and mine, they grew up and be on soccer together. And I knew at that time that her spirit and charisma was being wasted on the sidelines at Lawrence Stadium, because she was-
The referees would disagree.
You never know which Myra you're gonna get. But you could see back then, when our kids were young, and hers are about a quarter of the size they are tonight, that there was more for her to give. And I'm glad that she had the opportunity and will have the further opportunity to do so. Because through her efforts and those of our two colleagues that are leaving, this is a better city. And I, I want to end on a note of public service, because each one of them has sacrificed themselves for the city. Regardless if you were 100% supporter of them, you can very rarely find a time when you agreed with them. You know, an earlier resident touched on it, they sacrificed their time from their families, from their priorities, to give as part of this nine to the city in two-year increments. And that is to be respected, and I hope that others at home in this chamber this evening see that as honorable and may consider getting involved, whether on a board, or running for this council, or mayor one day. Because it is that spirit that makes this city better, and that's giving like they did. So I want to thank you too. Thank Council Alvarez Rodriguez at home, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Apdo.
Councilors, public hearing, public participation is now clo, oh, closed. Moving on. Public hearings, we have Document 28417. Lawrence Police Department requests to create two new positions with the Police Department. It was placed on the agenda by the Chief of the Police. Mr. James S. Patrick, Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document, excuse me, Document 2842017. Notice hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in Council Chambers, 200 Carmen Street, Lawrence, Mass., 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to revise ordinance for the City of Lawrence to be amended by adding a new section concerning Community Liaison Director to the, to the Lawrence Police Department to be inserted in proper order. The proposed ordinance provides for a Community Liaison Director as a non-union position appointed by the mayor, reporting directly to the Chief of Police. With Section A of the proposed ordinance is establishing a common Community Liaison Director as a non-union position to be appointed by the mayor, to the, reporting to the Chief of Police under the supervision of the Chief of Police, and Community Liaison Director will be responsible to plan and implement the Lawrence Police Department's efforts to prevent, deter, and investigate domestic violence, missing, runaway, and exploited children, and direct and manage community outreach initiatives within the Police Department, provide reciprocal communication between the Police Department and the community among its duties and responsibilities. Section B proposes, proposes to the qualifications of the position for the Community Liaison Director to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree in public administration, social work or related field from an accredited university with a minimum of five years of work experiencing in the area, experiencing the areas of community activism, developing community resources, and/or operating advocacy programs. The Community Liaison Director shall possess and maintain a valid driver's license. Section C of the proposed ordinance provides the salary of the Community Liaison Director to be established as a grade eight, $80,000 to $95,000 per year, under the Bennett and Associates Position Compensation and Classification Structure of 2005. The Community Liaison Director to be entitled to all benefits of City employees regularly employed in the administrative service of the city. To the extent, to the extent there exists any ordinance as the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only if approved. A complete and unabridged copy of the proposed ordinance was available for viewing, examining, and copying in the office of Lawrence City Clerk during the business hours of 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and was available for viewing as posted on the City Council website under public hearing sections of that website as published. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearings now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Name an address for the record, please.
Greetings, Councilors. My name is Diana Cruz, Director of Substance Abuse Prevention and Education at Lawrence Smith Room and Community Coalition. Just want to say what a great position this is and how vital it will be to success in the city of combating many of the social problems that we have, ranging from not just domestic violence, but homelessness, addiction issues, all of the social issues that we all struggle with solving and preventing are all tied together. So it's very important that we allocate resources to dealing with these issues. The Police Department has been an excellent partner with us in the Coalition and in the city, and I think this is going to be a tremendous resource for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearings now close. Councilors, before I call for a vote, I just wanted to point out that even though the title reads "Create Two New Positions," tonight we are only ordinating one, which is the Director of Community Liaison. The other is a clerical position, as a result does not need to be ordinance. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, I'm properly second. Discussion, Councilor LaPlante.
Sure, is the Chief here?
Yeah.
And available to ask your questions, Council President?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
You're the Council President. So one, just one question, a statement. The, recently when I've been meeting with a lot of residents in some of the tougher parts of, of, of the district that I represent, one of the constant concerns was their lack of trust with the Police Department, their fear of going to the Police Department, thinking that if they go to the Police Department, that their calls would be ignored, that the Police Department doesn't really care about what they're doing, and also that there might be some retribution or retaliation, because they were fearful that, that if information got to the police, that they would not hold that in sanctity, and that that information will get to the bad guys, and then they're putting themselves and their families at risk. That was the biggest piece out of that, out of many conversations. And I want to know if this position is, in what way will this position help impact that trust part of the relationship that's necessary between the Police Department and its citizens?
To answer that question as outlined in this, the, not specifically, but the, the individual will be responsible for building trust throughout the community as a civilian, as the civilian face of our community outreach efforts. That will be centered around public awareness, making public aware that they will stake, you know, information stays confidential unless absolutely needed for, for court prosecution, which is, is very rare. And we believe that a person as a paraprofessional, as not a uniformed police officer, will be able to bridge the gap that we've, that you've pointed out. We believe that someone with, with the skill set, not so much as law enforcement, but with more of a social services background, will be able to, to gain that trust and establish connections in some of the, some of the neighborhoods, as you pointed out, that, that may not have a cohesive group of neighbors that, that are in a community group. These are some of our most difficult neighborhoods. Some of our are difficult in the sense that there are many calls for service, more prone to crime, you know, on the south side, in particular areas, as well as in the north side, in parts of the Arlington District. So we're hoping that this individual will be able, on the grassroots front, be able to establish some groups, and in that sense, build some more trust with the Police Department.
And my last point, and I'll link us to the floor on this point, it's not really a question. My point is, is that we, we as a City Council are putting a lot of emphasis and obligations upon your department to protect the residents that we represent. And it's a very challenging environment, and sometimes it can be a very challenging mission. And part of, I think, important part of the mission is to communicate better, to increase the communication skills between our Police Department and the people that it protects and it serves, to let them know about what's going on and how they're out there and, and what's going on in, in the community. So my, my comment and recommendation is if we can find inside this an improvement, or continue to improve upon, what work is there. There's seeds there, but we need to, we need to find, whether it's social media, traditional media, knocking on doors, whatever it is to get that information, whatever it is that we're looking to do to build that up, I would strongly encourage that that pathway be explored to its fullest extent. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ortiz.
I'm sorry. Chief, can you, or, or anyone, I just need a little clarification. Some of the notes that we have here are a little bit intertwined about the work that happened, and where we landed, and how we landed as far as salary, and those, those kind of things. I don't, I don't think the Chief is necessarily the person to answer that question, but I'll give you a standby? Yeah, or are you? So can you talk a little bit about that work?
I would have to defer most of that to the, again, is a wide, wide-ranging position. The position is, is of the Director level, similar in the Police Department to a position as a captain. This person, albeit, on, on paper, it appears that one person reports to them, but there'll be many, many people reporting to whoever this individual is. They'll, it's a command, in our business, it's a command-level position, Director position.
Okay. So, so let me just stop you right there, just so that I can start piecing it together. So this position, you would consider in-house as a Director position? And you would say that it's equivalent to a-
Command-level position.
So is that, you said that was like a captain?
Like, it's a captain level. Again, they've, they're not-
So a captain, how many years' experience does a captain have? On average?
Minimum of ten years.
So he has a minimum of ten years. A command position would generally have a-
As, as a police officer.
As, as, as an officer.
Correct.
So for myself, another nuance of, of what we're asking and what we're looking at as far as the specification, it says masters or, unless I'm getting it mixed up with the other position, is masters or a bachelor's and five years of experience. And so when I'm looking at, and this is from a compensation mindset, yeah, just for the audience, to remind everyone, I have an HR background, and so that's how, this is where that's going. When I'm looking at this position, and I'm looking, I'm seeing the detail of what's hap, you know, what it, what it looks like, but what we're asking for is five years and a bachelor's, it doesn't seem to jive to me, and that's how come I'm, I'm having this line of questioning to say, okay, where is it that we're looking for with compensation for this? Who is this equivalent to? Why is the salaried, salaried, wow. The salary rate, that was the word that I was trying to get, the salary rate seemed like somebody that should have closer to seven to 10 years' experience based on their duties, that we're not asking, we're not, we're not asking very much for them to match this position. Does that, does that make sense to you, where, where I'm going to, do you see what I'm saying there?
I think it'd be a combination of, of education and experience. Again, it's, the best example I can come from the Police Department would be in that area of, of, of experience. I mean, that's basically years of service in each rank, so it's not exactly the-
Yeah, it's not, it's not exact.
Similar, but again, it's, it's a, it's a level that would, you know-
How did we land-
Not the traditional direct reports.
Right.
But there would be many reports, people reporting to this person as-
And that's where the salary compensation comes from.
Right, in the sense that-
The experience, that we're asking for, for me, in my experience, doesn't match the money, the salary compensation. And so I understand, maybe around this table, they've worked on that, maybe they worked on it with you. I just want to know, how did we land on that? Where even having a master's degree without any experience is not, is not equitable. So we're saying, in the paper, it says masters or a bachelor's and five years of experience. Five years of experience, to me in this situation, especially when we're dealing with the community, to echo what my counselor and colleague, my colleague, Councilor LaPlante, said, is that we have a trust issue. I think that our last meeting was definitely evident of some of the themes that are in the city, and people have different experiences. I'm fortunate enough, and I'll publicly say this, we have a great working relationship. I believe that your force has been very responsive. Sometimes, you know, there were things that I would like to have seen better, but it's, I understand that we have a long way to go to combat what people feel and what we talked about last time for perception.
Correct.
That being said, a person with a master's degree is not fully equipped, but in and of itself, without experience, to handle the nuances of what we have and need in a community liaison. So that's, I wasn't in the body that worked this, and I'm just offering that as my observation as a City Counselor and one voice at this table, and also from a professional stand. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Council Maldonado.
Chief, I don't see in any part of the job description whether the person should be a bilingual or not. A person that is gonna be a liaison-
I believe that definitely would be a preference.
Huh?
It would be a preference, yes, sir. I know I don't see it in the language of this.
But if it is not stated, I mean, I, I understand that if a person is going to serve as a liaison between the community, which is primarily about 90% Hispanic, with a lot of them limited English proficient, and the Police Department, I believe that that should be one of the qualifications, that the person must be bilingual. And it's not there.
Yeah, I would have to say it was probably in the first iteration, and it was possibly an oversight that it's not in there.
So I'm going, I'm, I'm going to make a motion before we vote on that.
I think, not officer.
Huh?
Council Rodriguez.
I'm sorry?
It's in there. It's in there.
Where? The first paragraph?
No, so if-
The job posting.
Councilor-
Oh, the job posting, but it's not a requirement in the, in the job description?
So-
Huh?
So what we have to, just for point of clarity here, there's two things that, that we have to consider when we are doing this. One is the ordinance itself, so we are trying to ordinance a position. Do we wish to include the language as part of the ordinance and/or the job posting? The job posting is different. So in the job posting, it is something that is completely handled by the personal department? So if we were to include it as part of the ordinance, the personal department will be required to include it always. Here, we're saying English and Spanish candidates preferred as part of the job posting. So, so it is part of the job posting that we have prepared, it is not part of the ordinance.
Okay.
If it is stated only bilingual preferred, that doesn't mean much. And I would rather that it becomes part of the, of the qualification Session B, that it specifically stated that, that the person should be bilingual.
So it's, it reads, preference will be given to bilingual English-Spanish candidates, just quote it.
Yes. Yes.
Not in the ordinance. Motion. Make the motion.
Yes, I would like to make the motion that, that the language of bilingual, that preference will be given to a bilingual in Spanish candidate be included.
Prefer, right?
Prefer, yes.
Second the motion.
In the ordinance.
In the ordinance, yes.
Can I make the motion?
Council President, point of parliamentary inquiry, who actually made the underlying motion?
So, the motion to approve the document was presented by Councilor Maldonado, by Councilor LaPlante.
So, are we, are...
So, I would like to make an amendment.
An amendment to the motion.
So, I, I would, if it's okay with the Council President, if it's okay with the author of the amendment, I just have one question to ask, the proposal before I accept or not accept it, which is, how do we determine whether or not someone is bilingual in Spanish? What proficiency level? Is there a test? I mean, if I say a few words in Spanish, does that make me bilingual? What is the, what is the, what is the criteria by which we are going to say that you know enough Spanish to be able to, to be able to communicate?
I would say that the person should be proficient in communi, in communication, which is more important than anything else. If the person is going to serve as a liaison, then obviously that person will be communicating with a majority of Latinos in the city. So, consequently, my feeling is that it should be, the person should be proficient in communication, and that that profession should be determined by the personal director.
So, you, so just so I'm clear, you're going to put, through this motion, you're going to put the onus on the personal director to make the determination as to whether or not this person is fluent enough in Spanish?
Exactly. Exactly.
Can I ask you a question, just clarification? What...
Councilor Ortiz?
Thank you. Who is the hiring manager for this position? Who hires the person?
The mayor.
So, the hiring, the hiring process for this position would be the mayor, correct? And so, in turn, would the mayor, in conjunction with the personnel director, hires or...
Normally...
Is that the, I'm just asking about the process for this specific position.
So, based on what the language presented to us, it says that it will be appointed by the mayor, reporting to the police chief. So, the mayor will appoint, you know, the person he or she will consider to be the best option for, for the community liaison director. So, that, that's the language that we are reviewing today. So, it is appointed by the mayor...
Okay.
...working for the chief of the police.
Mr. President, remember that all the, all the applicants normally goes to the personal director, and he screens the applications to make sure they qualify.
That's the process.
And then, those applications are submitted to the mayor. So, it, it seems to me that at that point, at that level, since it's, the personal director is going to receive all the applications, and the gentleman is qualified to determine whether a person, a person is, is fluent, that should not be a problem. Now, if we change the personal director eventually, and another person comes in that is not able to do that, then we have a problem.
So, through you, Mr. President, I think the, the speaker makes a good point. I mean, right now, the personnel director, I believe, is proficient and is bilingual, but that person may not be there, well, we know won't be there forever. The next personnel director may not be someone who's bilingual.
That is true.
And now, we're going to have somebody who may not, who can speak Camir in English pretty well, but not Spanish in English pretty well. And now, how is that person going to be able to determine whether or not that that individual is proficient? So, are we setting ourselves up for potential failure because we don't have a personnel director that's required to be bilingual?
Then probably what we should say is that fluency should, shall be determined by the administration. Simple.
Okay. And I would, and I hear ya, if we go down that road, oftentimes, in, in, in Councilor President, the, the previous speaker's very good at wanting specifics. We want five years of an engineering degree, we want three years of this, we want to see this specific box done. And what we're saying here is, the administration can, if they feel like that person's good enough with it, and we're going to go with it, and they're, what you're doing, I, what we're, what we're potentially doing, and, and I'm, I'm not sure where I'm falling on this yet. I, I frankly, I agree that in today's Lawrence, we need to have individuals who are able to communicate, and a predominant language in our city is Spanish, and it is what it is, that's the way it is right now. That may not be here forever, that could change to another language 10 years from now, 20 years, who knows, right?
And then, the ordinance will change.
Well, but the point is, right now, we're making an ordinance that we're saying whoever is the mayor's got to make that determination. It's kind of wishy-washy, it's, it's not very, unlike the other stuff that's precise, this is, it's hard to put our arms around this. So, I know we have other ordinances, and I'm not sure how we grasp with that. If we can follow that lead, that at least makes me feel a little more comfortable. But I'm just setting us up, we can go in this direction, but we could face a problem in the future, that's my rec, that's my, that's my concern.
No, I, I under, I understand your point as to, as to whom is going to determine the fluency of that individual.
From my understanding, we currently do not have any position ordinance with a specific language skill requirement. What we have approved before is the job posting, as well as the ordinance language for the position itself, and the job posting does have the pref, the preferred language requirement for the city. So, remember, it's, it's two different steps. The, the job posting has always, every job posting, I read every job posting that comes out of the city, sent by our personnel director, and all of them always include preference for bilingual candidates.
I, I understand that, Mr. President. The problem is that with this particular, this particular position, it is essential, it is essential that the person be bilingual. It is essential, and it should be a requirement of the, of the qualification. As to how it's going to be determined, the fluency, Mr. LaPlante has a good point. I don't know, the, the mayor should be able to determine the fluency, or somebody in the administration should be able to determine the fluency of an ind, of an individual ability to communicate effectively in the Spanish language.
My final point on this, I think, is the following, which is, I think that if we have this in the job description, and if we're having a fair and impartial evaluation of the candidates for this, there needs to be boxes set up, right? Does that person, there are certain skillsets that we need, right? And if that person has the educational skillset, the work experience skillsets, the other qualifications required, one of those boxes as well is, is to have the ability to speak. And, and what we're suggesting here is, some of this might be subjective, right? We're going down a slippery slope a little bit, but sometimes there has to be a trade-off. I, I would rather us have that strong preference inside the job description. We all know that we need to have someone with bilingual, today, Spanish-speaking skills. I think we can all agree on that, there's no doubt about that. To change the ordinance to have that, that's a bit of a different thing, because now we're, that's the law, but if, but I think that if we change the job descri, job description already has it, right? So, if we keep that in there, I, I can't, I can't foresee, although it could happen, somebody saying, we're going to have a, someone who's non-speaking Spanish, who are not able to communicate well in Spanish, and we're going to put them in that position, that person will fail. That person will not succeed in that position, if they don't have it in today's Lawrence, it will, they will, the person will fail. So, I can't imagine the mayor, or any mayor, this mayor, the next mayor, the mayor after that, if the Lawrence is, remains unchanged, as it is today, finding someone who does not have the skillset. I like to keep it in the job description, but I'm concerned about the ordinance.
Again, knowing how politics works, I don't want to leave it up to, to any, I don't want to leave it open. I, I'd rather that we include as part of the qualifications, and fluency shall be determined by the administration.
Okay. Councilors, any further questions or comments?
Is it possible through you?
Councilor Ortiz?
Thank you. Is it possible to require it on the job posting with it not being in the ordinance? Or does it have to say preferred? Because I've, we've required things before, so...
I, that, that will be, honestly, I think that will be more of a legal question, I...
HR, I mean...
HR.
HR, I mean, is Mr. Bonet here? No?
I do not have an answer, and I would not want to speak on behalf of the personal director.
Because...
I do know that I've seen in all the job postings...
You can job post, we, you can require anything on a job posting, but I know that this is a little bit different, because you're working for the, for the city, we're dealing with ordinance. I agree with both of my colleagues in both of their positions. I think for myself, I'm actually pu, pushing for multilingual, you know, bilingual in Spanish required, multilingual preferred. We are a changing Lawrence. We have a huge Asian population that's coming, we have a Camir population, we have a lot of people from Nigeria here, and so we are in turn an immigrant city. To say that if we put it in the ordinance to be bilingual, that would be a requirement, bilingual in whatever that Lawrence looks like, because we're, we're making a law that's long-term. For myself, without Mr. Bonet being here to offer clarification, I would think that in the job description, we can say Spanish is required, multilingual preferred, because we're talking about a community liaison that is representing and acts, and is an access point for the community as a whole. And Lawrence in itself is a multicultural city, and we are moving in that way at this moment. So, without any clear direction, I don't, you know, whatever, I don't know what we're, we're going to finally land on. Second point would be, I really would like a review or a response. I don't know if we're on a time crunch with this. As far as compensation, I'll reiterate, the compensation does not match the experience that we're asking for. It needs to be, I can get a master's tomorrow and not be prepared to do this job. I mean, granted that, of course, you know I am, but you can't just have any master's or have a master's and do this job effectively, the same way a captain or a commanding officer would do inside the Lawrence Police Department. And if we are saying that, yes, on paper, there's only one person reporting, but actually, they're really going to be spearheading what our community now looks like, our Lawrence, what the Lawrence Police Department now looks like to the community, community, that's a big command. And so, where I say I agree in respect to where the compensation is for salary, the experience doesn't match that.
Councilors, any further questions or comments? So, the, the motion that we have on the floor is a motion presented by Councilor LaPlante.
Councilor LaPlante or Maldonado?
So, Councilor LaPlante originally presented the motion to approve. Councilor Maldonado presented a second motion, okay? Second by, so what will happen, just for, for procedural purposes, the first motion that we're voting on is the amendment motion presented by Councilor Maldonado.
Which is?
Once, the motion is to include the language requirement, Spanish, as part of the ordinance. So, that is the first motion. If that motion passes, it becomes part of Councilor LaPlante's motion. If the motion fails, the other motion that we will be voting on is the motion presented by Councilor LaPlante, which is to approve the position as is, with no changes.
So, we're voting on the amendment, amended?
Right now, it's, the vote that we will be taking is on the amendment to the motion presented by Councilor LaPlante.
No.
Okay?
His motion.
Yeah, no, he's, he's amending your motion. So, the vote that we're taking is to amend your motion.
And can we please, for the record, have it read what the amendment to the motion is?
Mr. Clerk?
Proposed amendment by Councilor Maldonado is to amend the main motion for approval to include a preference will be given to bilingual English-Spanish candidates to be inserted in the ordinance, and the determination as to fluency to be determined by the administration. Is that correct? That motion was seconded by Councilor Rodriguez.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any oppose? The ayes have it. Councilors, all those in favor in, of the motion presented by Councilor LaPlante, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, moving on, document 30617, Handicap Parking, 12 Park Street, placed on the agenda by Gloria E. Candelario. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3062017, notices hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of city code for the city Lawrence to be further amended by adding a following new paragraph to the handicap parking section on Park Street, south side, from a point 155 feet westerly of the intersection of Berkeley Street to a point 175 feet westerly of the intersection of Berkeley Street. To the extent there exists any ordinance, as the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 33017, Handicap Parking, 9092 Greenwood Street, placed on the agenda by Councilor Rodriguez. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
330, document 330 of 2017, notices hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section concerning Greenwood Street, south side, from a point 77 feet westerly of the intersection of Gale Street to a point 97 feet westerly of the intersection of Gale Street. To the extent there exists ordinance, as the contrary, they are hereby repealed. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, published on December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, any questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 33117, Handicap Parking, 208 Carlton Street, placed on the agenda by Councilor Abdu. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3312017, notices hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on December 19, 2017, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city Lawrence by adding a new paragraph to the handicap section of the municipal code concerning Carlton Street, south side, from a point 52 feet easterly of the intersection of Bigelow Street to a point 72 feet of easterly of the intersection of Bigelow Street. To the extent there exists any ordinance, as the contrary, they are hereby repealed to that extent only, as published on December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve and waive for 30 days.
Motion has been made, is as properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 33217, Handicap Parking, 41 Irving Ave. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3322017, notices hereby given, that the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in council chambers at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to the handicap parking section to be inserted in proper order. Irving Avenue, north side, from a point 255 feet easterly of the intersection of Korea Street to a point 275 feet easterly of the intersection of Korea Street. To the, to the extent there exists any ordinance, as the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Next document is document 34517, Handicap Parking, 131 Garden Street. Next document is Document 34517, Handicap Parking, 131 Garden Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3452017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by amending the ordinances, adding a new section to the handicap parking section of the code. Concerning Garden Street, North Side, from a point 180 feet southerly of the intersection of Newbury Street to a point 200 feet easterly of the intersection of Newbury Street. To the extent there exist ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published December 8.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 34617, Handicap Parking, 1820 Phillips Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3462017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to amend the following paragraph to handicap parking zone by its parking zone ordinance to be inserted in proper order. Phillips Street, East Side, from a point 100 feet southerly of the intersection of Abbott Street to a point 120 feet easterly of the intersection of Abbott Street. To the extent there exist ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published December 8.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 134817, Handicap Parking, 37 Oregon Ave. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 348 of 2017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the City Code for the City Lawrence by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section concerning Oregon Ave, North Side, from a point 235 feet easterly of the intersection of Ames Street to a point 150, excuse me, 150, 255 feet easterly of the intersection of Ames Street. To the extent there exist any ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only, as published on December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document, 35417, Handicap Parking, 12 Berkeley Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3542017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the municipal code by adding a new paragraph to the handicap parking section to be inserted in proper order. Berkeley Street, West Side, from a point 95 feet southerly of the intersection of Park Street to a point 115 feet to be inserted in proper, excuse me, 115 feet southerly of the intersection of Park Street. To the extent there exist ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published on December 8.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 36617, Stop Sign, Harriman Street and Ferry Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3662017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by amending the municipal code, adding a new paragraph to the stop sign and flashing red signals section at Harriman Street. Southbound drivers at Harriman Street at Ferry. To the extent that there exist any ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishes to speak? Seeing there's none. Counselors, the public hearing is now closed. Any motions?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days?
Has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 37717, Stop Sign, Miss Platt Street and Miss Pleasant Street by Councilor Ortiz. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3772017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of the proposed hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public hearing, excuse me, public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the municipal code to be further amended by adding a new paragraph to the stop sign and flashing red signals section concerning east Platt Street, eastbound drivers on Platt Street at East Pleasant Street. To the extent there exist ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve and waive the 30 days?
Second.
Motion, is there, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document is Document 39417, Capital Asset Project Manager. Proposed ordinance for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 3942017. Noticeance hereby given, the City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 19, 2017, in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the City Lawrence to be amended by adding a following new paragraph, Section 2.64270, Capital Asset Project Manager, to Chapter 2.64 of the Municipal Code concerning the Department of Public Works, to be inserted in proper numerical order. As published as Section 2.64270, Capital Asset Project Manager. Section A provides for the establishment of the position of a Capital Asset Project Manager to be recommended by the mayor and approved by the City Council. The Capital Asset Project Manager will report directly to the Director of Public Works and perform duties and responsibilities. The position is fully described in the underbridge copy of the proposed ordinances that was available for viewing and copying in the office of City Clerk and posted on the City Council website. Section B of the proposed ordinance provides for qualifications of the Capital Asset Manager to have a minimum of bachelor's degree in construction management, civil engineering, or architectural, architectural master's degree preferred, from an accredited university, and a minimum of five years of work experience in successfully managing construction projects, along with experiences in project management and capital program planning. Section C of the proposed ordinance provides for a salary of the Capital Asset Project Manager to be a grade eight, ranging from $80,000 to $95,000 per year. Under the Bennett and Associates Position Compensation and Classification Structure of 2005, Capital Asset Project Manager shall be entitled to all benefits of the city employees regularly employed in the administrative services to the city. The completed underbridge copy of the proposed ordinances was available for viewing, examining, and copying in the office of City Clerk, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass, during business hours from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and was available also for viewing on the City Council Public Hearing Section of the City Website, as published and located on that section of the website. To the extent there exist any ordinances, the contrary, they are hereby repealed, if approved, and persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published on December 8.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard?
You're very kind. Good evening, Counselors. My name is Eileen Burnell. I reside at 257 Mount Vernon Street here in Lawrence, and I also serve as the Mayor's Chief of Staff. With regard to Document Number 39417, which is as Capital Asset Project Manager, the proposed change to the ordinance as presented to the council, there was a change made at the Ordinance Committee level that is to have the council review that appointment. The charter for the City of Lawrence clearly establishes the mayor as the appointing authority for all positions in the city. Section 3.6 of our charter carves out very specific department head-level appointments that do require that additional approval from the City Council. This is not a department head-level position. This is a upper tier, Level 8, but it is not a department head. It does not fall into 3.6. So, the request this evening would be specifically two parts. One is to either remove the language, having the council be a part of that appointment authority. And respectfully, if the council feels that that is vital and really wants that in there, even though it is not a department head-level position, that the process be followed properly, which is to say that the item should have been then presented as a charter change. It would be a change to our charter to have the City Council approve a position that it does not currently approve. The mayor is the appointing authority under our city charter. So, my request tonight would be, A, to remove the language, or B, to leave the language in, but table the item so that you can get a legal opinion verifying for yourselves from our legal department that that is a charter change. And if you deem it to be a charter change, then to republish the item as a charter change, as opposed to a simple ordinance, and run it through properly, run it through that way. If you really do believe that you need to be part of this appointment, then let's just handle it as a charter change. Those are, that's it. I'm here if you have any questions, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Name's Dick Russell. I seem to remember that when this was batted around, either the first, at the original council meeting, or the Ordinance Committee, Councilor Maldonado wanted inserted in there that the stipulation, a degree in civil engineering, construction management. I don't want to see that changed. We don't need to see the fiasco that went through with the city engineer two or three years ago. We need a person that is qualified. Not a political favor, nothing. We need people that are qualified to be able to do the job. That's all, that's all I want, is I want to make sure that that language stays in this ordinance as it goes through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Brunch, 32 Drakehead Street. Now, I must admit, I apologize, I didn't really read this entire, this ordinance, but it really does seem to me to be a reworking, I'm sorry I'm reading here, of an existing unfilled position, which was ordinance, a Projects and Planning Manager. And in that position, I just want to point out, I read the ordinances, and that position required City Council approval. And also, there was another recently filled position, and again, let me go here, Supervisor of Projects and Planning, that seems to be directly in line. These two positions seem to be directly in a line. And I'm always a little bit concerned when we go from somewhere where we had no workers for two or three years, and all of a sudden, we're going to insert two of them in this line. Do we need two, is what I'm asking? And I'm wondering if that position of Supervisor of Projects and Planning was ever re-ordinanced, as it was vacant for a long time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to?
Second, with discussion.
Motion to approve has been made and properly seconded. Councilor Maldonado?
I also would like to make, I'd like to amend my motion to take out the portion that says, well, you know something? I'm going to listen to what Councilor Maldonado has to say, and then I'll reserve my judgment.
Councilor Maldonado?
Number one, even though we don't have here, in the papers that was given, we don't have the civil engineering stated. Nevertheless, I know it was posted.
No, it is.
Okay, but for some reason, it's not in the paper.
On your paper?
Yes. So, I don't have a problem with that. In regard to the requirement to be submitted, recommended by the mayor and approved by the City Council, first of all, this is a management position. Obviously, this person is going to be dealing with millions of dollars that the council have to approve. So, it seems to me that this person, the qualifications of this individual should be approved by the City Council, recommended by the mayor and approved by the City Council. Because of the enormity of the job, the amount of funding that this person is going to be handling and supervising, and we have other positions that are not, that are not supervisory position, and yet, we require them to be approved by the City Council. So, this is not something new. Again, I would like to make sure that since this council approved the plan, and this person is going to be handling so much money, the supervision, so much money, my feeling is that this City Council should have a hand on it, on who's going to be doing that work, which the City Council have to approve anyway. So, I feel very strong that that should be the case.
Councilor Rodriguez, Councilor Abdu?
I can see the conflict that we're facing today. It's a child of violation if we approve it as it is. But I also see the importance of the City Council getting involved in this position. I have a question and probably a solution of the issue, if we can think about it and probably get a recommendation. If we somehow discussed the change of the title of the position and make it a director, and then the City Council is going to have to approve it. And that's a possibility, and that way, we're not violating the City Shadow. That's something that we can think of. That's something that we can ask for a recommendation and probably make the proper changes to be able to not violate the City Shadow and be able to have the City Council approve that position here at this level and be appointed by the mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Rodriguez. Councilor Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would open that, I'm concerned this evening that I may not be able to support this item if we come to a conclusion, only because of the questions raised regarding the charter. And then I would, I would ask a question, I was going to ask of Chief Burnell or Councilor Maldonado or anyone here. Can they cite some examples of other positions that aren't directors that this council approves?
The Deputy Chief is one.
Deputy Chief of Police?
Yes.
The City Engineer.
So, thank you. I appreciate it. But I would like to, something other than the Deputy Police, or the City Engineer. So, someone said City Engineer, is that?
The Deputy Chief is in the charter.
It's part of the charter.
I understood, and I will appreciate your answer, Ron. I would just like to set the police aside, only because it's gotten politicized over the years. So, I want to put the Deputy Police Chief in, please.
I guess the point that I was making in Councilor Maldonado's example supports my point, which was the council positions that you do appoint are stated in the charter for the most part. There may be some errors in our ordinances that shouldn't be that way, but the charter is set up that the mayor appoints, and there's specific carve-outs where the council then also is part of that appointment process.
The deputy chief, some of the department heads, and that's all stated in the charter. So, what I'm saying is if you really want to be part of this process, that's okay, but let's do it correctly, and then let's change it, post it as a charter change, have the hearing as a charter change, and send it through that way, if that's what we really want to do. But I think what you're doing right now isn't consistent, and it may have been done in the past in error, and there may be some sporadic examples of that in our ordinances, but I don't think that's correct.
So, Mr. President, if I can continue to my line of questioning of the chief. As you understand it, and I realize the personnel director and the DPW director today this evening, as Councila Maldonado pointed out, this person will be managing, or supervising, or directing. Could you articulate for us what they will be doing with the capital, is it the capital budget? Capital budgeted items, or are they the items already in construction?
I apologize. I'm not the personnel director, so I'm not probably as familiar with the proposed position as I should be. What I will say is that they're gonna fall under the DPW director, who is currently managing our capital asset improvements, as well as an entire department. So, while they will be managing a very large budget, they will not be doing it in an isolated way. They do it under department head. So, whatever projects they do choose to pull forward, they're gonna be doing it with the approval of their department head, who you do oversee and approve. So, yes, there is a huge budget that comes through with a couple of checks and balances on it. One is that the, our budget director, Mike Ianello, helps comprise it and helps prioritize it, as does the DPW director. So, there's like already two people pulling it together, but what happens is we have this wonderful list, and then each department is off doing their own thing, and your day-to-day gets you so busy that you're not remembering, oh, we have to fix the elevator and the roof and those two windows down there. So, to make sure that those capital improvements stay on track, they're trying to bring in that kind of management-level person, which is lacking right now.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's such a question.
No, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions or comments? Councila Maldonado, Councila Laplante.
Okay. Again, I don't see any conflict or any violation of any ordinances. I can tell you other positions, but the point is that we are the one that create ordinances, okay? This, that is the function of this council, okay? And basically, what I want to make sure is that we are sure, okay, that this council will have the power to at least be a participant in selecting this individual, which is going to supervise a tremendous amount of millions of dollars, and I want to make sure that that happens.
Councila Laplante.
So, thank you, Council President. So, I'm the author of this motion. And I'm listening to the debate, and I listened to the chief of staff, and I've read the job description, and I'm of the mind that there's still some things that need to be ferreted out. There still needs to be more information that needs to be retrieved, and I appreciate the potential solution of trying to get around what the problem is here regarding a director versus a department head. However, having said that, you can call it whatever you want. My sense is that it's a direct line. It talks here about being a director to a director, the director to the, but its reporting requirement is to the DPW director. So, there's some questions regarding all this. I think the spirit of this charter, not having been here in 1983 when this was done, but I think the spirit of is that there's a direct report to the mayor. It's a director's position, or a supervisor's direct report, my understanding, could be wrong. And the problem going down this road, this rabbit hole, we'll always find an exception, right? We found some exceptions. You will always, there's nothing ironclad about it. However, I think the idea here is that we want, as a council, wanted to have some review of the people who are the direct reports of the mayor, the fire chief, the DPW director, the police chief, recreation department, IST director, these people who are direct reports to the mayor. This right here is a report to the DPW director, so it's not a direct report. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole about maybe four other items that previous councils said, forget about that, we're just gonna do it our way. But I would feel more comfortable getting a letter from the city attorney to make sure we're doing this the right way. I think that's been, I think this could go down a very controversial road. I don't want to compound bad decisions. And so, I'm gonna make a motion, and I understand our time here is short, Mr. Maldonado, and you will not be here for this. But you will come here, but, and I appreciate that, because I think you put this forward, and if I'm in your shoes, I want to see it resolved tonight as well, and I can respect that. But what I think is the best practice this evening is to get that answered, to get that reviewed by the city attorney's office, so that as we make this decision, we at least make sure that we're not compounding a bad mistake in the past and doing the right thing. So, on that note, because I had everybody had a chance to speak, I didn't want to interrupt anybody, I'm gonna make a motion to table and to request the city attorney to provide an opinion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Communications from the mayor, city officials, and the city attorney, there's none. Appropriation orders or resolutions, there's none. Committee reports, we have.
The ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance committee. Counselors, if you will bear with me, I know that there are some items that are simply to order a public hearing, and there are some others for which we have people in the audience. How about we take them out of order to move the agenda along with the people in the audience and be? We, today, the items were presented by Councilor Rodriguez, who was assigned as the temporary chair due to the absence of Chair Estela Reyes and Vice Chair Niuka Álvarez Rodríguez. Mr. Chair from the ordinance committee, let's take document 26417 out of order.
264.
Seventeen. Oh, that's two. Attorney Corrigan, will you speak on that item today? Yes. That's to order a public hearing. That's to order a public hearing.
And with the proper language.
You want to speak before we order the public hearing?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay. So, we do have CMA auto fair and auto show. Mr. Chair.
350.
So, that's 35017.
Yes, the ordinance committee discussed the item and approved the item as presented with the modification of being a hold on the Pemberton Park, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go back to ordinance shortly, since the rest, unless Attorney Corrigan, are you here for 39917? That's to order a public hearing as well.
Yes, I'm here for that.
Do you want to speak before we order? Okay. 39617, Mr. Vice President and Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Council President. Give me one moment, please, while I look for that document. Thank you very much, Council President. So, the Budget Finance Committee met and voted unanimously to send this document up with the favorable recommendation. This is a document to deal with, from the Office of Planning and Development. It's a park line acquisition renovation for communities program, otherwise known as the park program, and this is about a resolution for phase two of the improvements to deal Connell Park, otherwise known as the South Common, for $610,000, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Ms. Fink, I'm going to assume you're here for the table matter, or were you here just for that one? Were you here for 39617 only? Are you here for 388 as well? We're gonna leave a table tonight. Okay. Lieutenant, are you here for any particular item?
Yeah, they have an item here. 399.
So, we will be ordering a public hearing, and we will discuss it in the next meeting. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for spending the night with us. We appreciate it. Okay, so, given that there is no additional items, let's go back to the top of the agenda. Ordinance committee, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item 5317 is a handicap parking, the deletion of these signs is on 149 South of Toga Street, and request a handicap parking space on 41, 71 Cambridge Street. And that was to order a public hearing, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say one, two.
We don't have.
We have it. Now, we still have a corner here. Okay, you may continue. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document, document 12317, Mr. Chair.
Yes. The item 12317 is a home loan petition and authorizing the city of Lawrence to access fine to utility companies for failure of relocating or removing double poles and wires. And that was put on the agenda by Council President, and this is, the intention is to order a public hearing, and I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 26417.
Yes. 26417 is the proposal of the ordinance to regulate mobile food vendor. That was voted on favorably, and recommended to the full council to order a public hearing. I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Pending the proper language.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 30817.
30817 is the Lawrence Historical Commission request to recognize authority to the, of the commission to name and rename sites within the jurisdictions of the historical sites, and that was voted favorably. To order a public hearing, I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Discussion, Councila Laplante.
I want to make sure I'm clear on this. It's become one of my pet issues here, the monuments, et cetera, throughout the city. So, just so I'm clear before I vote on this, so if you are, the historic commission has jurisdiction over certain parts of the city.
Yes.
Is there anybody in the historic commission here this evening that could maybe help?
No, we asked them to come for the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Once we order the public hearing, they're gonna be here.
No, so, at the ordinance committee, we told them definitely not to be at this one, because usually, we just order the public hearing. So, so we will not be ordering a public hearing because we don't have a draft ordinance.
We actually discussed that with the proper language from the attorney. That's basically when we're gonna order the public hearing, if we can, and then we have to table it.
So, the city attorney submitted a, an email to us, and I will read it for the record. It says, "I am not sure what is really being asked here. The historic districts are named through the city council, through city council approval, so it will, it will be an impermissible delegation of legislative authority to a board to allow the LHC to rename them. If it is just naming parks within the district, and the LHC wants to ensure that they're consulted before any parks are named, then I can draft something like that, but I probably should have what is needed explained specifically. Generally, the local historic districts are under the authority of the Lawrence, local historic district committee, which is different than the LHC, and that will also appear to be in conflict with the state-enabling statute. I will ask Yona to send me a written explanation of what is attempted to be accomplished."
All right, so I guess I was gonna have to table that?
Mr. President, I think that we, Mr. Laplante has some concerns that we address at the committee level. And obviously, we wanted to include the language that the city council will still have the power to to name or rename whatever the city council needed to do that. And that they will only consult, the city council will only consult the historical commission when he dealt with an item within the historical areas. But the language was not changed because the city attorney, as you can see in his memo, was not clear as to what we were looking for. So, my suggestion is that Mr. Laplante, who had the biggest concern, will get in touch with the city attorney and specifically state to him exactly that, what we are looking for, that we are looking for a language that will still maintain the power of the city council level to name or rename any areas or items in the city, and that they will only consult the Lawrence Historical Commission when that item, or streets, or whatever, or building, is within the historical district.
Councila Laplante.
Thank you for volunteering me, counsel. I appreciate that.
It's just that I'm not gonna be here, so.
As I'm reviewing the memo by Attorney Boddy, he says in his last sentence, and I think we just got this in our here today, right? "I will ask Jonas Dunza to send me a written explanation of what is attempted to be accomplished." I think the burden here is on the historic commission to be as, to tell what they're looking to do, right? Now, we all, I, everybody knows how I feel about it, and we had a discussion in the last meeting. I think I know how some of you feel about it, Council President, but I think the first nut here is for the historic commission to give to the city attorney exactly what they're looking for. Then we can react to that. Either we like what they're doing or not, but it's gotta, it's, it's gotta come. This is not a resolution that we put forward. It's something that the historic commission put forward. So, they're the ones that should be providing that information to the city attorney, not me going to the city attorney and saying, here's what we're wanting from this, because it's not mine, it's not our proposal. That's how I would, that's how I would.
I understand that, Mr. Laplante, but they were present at that meeting, and obviously, they don't have any objection to your concern in putting that language there that is going to protect the integrity of the city council and the power of the city council. So, they don't have a problem with that.
So, essentially, they were advocating their proposal to me.
I'm advocating that you, who were the person who originated the concern, that you contact the city attorney and let him know exactly what we are looking for.
If the council so chooses, I will do this, knowing full well that it's gonna be biased in the view that I have, and if you're okay with that, then that's fine with me too. So, if the council wishes, I can certainly follow up like that.
Council Rodriguez.
Council President, to you. Thank you so much for the opportunity. This is what I understood from the petition. So, the historical, the Lawrence Historical Commission would like to be involved in the process at the end of the day. They would like to have another step before we name or before anybody from the city, not the city council, anybody from the city, name or rename any of, could be monument, street, bridges on those specific historic districts. Once that happened, the historical commission gonna evaluate the situation, recommend to this body, the city council, a possible change or probably deny those changes. They would like to get involved. That's what I understand from this. And as far as I, as we discuss on the ordinance committee, we're looking to have a change ordinance to this current city ordinance that we have in place, adding another step to the process, and getting the historical commission involved on any particular change that anybody from the street, not the city council, anybody from the street would like to do, like any other citizen town around the area. I don't see that as a bad thing, because there are, the historical commission are the people that deal with historical issues in the city or in those particular districts. But if there is any legal situation that we don't, that we don't feel comfortable with, or we might not know about it, I think that this body should request an opinion from the city attorney, asking, um, whether or not this is possible, but not necessarily asking the city attorney to provide a resolution of what we want to do, because at the end of the day, we are the, this body is the one that should make the changes. Should be based on recommendation, probably, not necessarily. But I don't know, Council President, what do you think?
Gets thrown at me. Do you want my opinion on the process or my opinion on the issue?
Both.
The issue. Me personally, when I was looking, and I was in the ordinance committee, I had Me personally, when I was looking and I was in the ordinance committee, I had the opportunity with you guys to read through the ordinance language that is listed. And the ordinance language as presented specified what their role is, and originally, they wanted to create a new ordinance. I don't think that there's a need for a creation of a new ordinance. If the council wishes to make change to what is written today, I think there has to be an amendment to the language as presented, not a new ordinance written, because we already have a system in place for this historical commissions. And we have to understand that there is certain, several historic districts in the city. The one specifically that they have been addressing is the North Common Historic District. But we have other districts that are not as active and committees are not as involved. So I think that it's important, if we were to make a decision, that we consider all avenues before the decision is finalized. I was at the meeting and I understand what they want, but I am still unclear as to what the language should read. I know what they're looking for. Like, I understand the concept, but the language, it's what I am not sure as to how it will read. And I think that was a sentiment in the ordinance committee, that we support the idea, but we don't know how to write the idea to ensure that the city council doesn't lose power over what they're trying to do. So, those are my two cents in this conversation. I don't know if you even held our worst...
Should we ask the city attorney what's the language?
And that's what the city attorney is asking us in return. The city attorney is asking us, "What are you recommending?" Because I don't understand what the recommendation is. So we are, in the ordinance committee, we sent the city attorney correspondent saying, "Mr. Attorney, draft the language." But the city attorney is saying, "On what am I drafting a language?" So, it's like a conversation that is up in the air because it's not finalized by the Historic Commission itself. I think that the Historic Commission has presented us information about monuments and the historical value of the names and, you know, the dates that they occurred, but not an actual language of how it should read. And that's where the confusion is coming about. If we want a draft language, we should draft it, send it to the city attorney to review and approve. Or the city attorney could provide us a language, but he doesn't have the base to write it. So that's where we are unclear in this. And I think Counsel Madonado is nodding, so I think he and I have the same sentiment in this issue. Counselor LaPlante?
When we sent this, when we sent this to the city attorney on December 15th, did we also include what the Lawrence Historic Commission sent to us? Was there a packet of information or was it just simply the, we wanted them to, or what was sent to the city attorney, I guess is my question?
So, we have been working with the city, so this document has been before us for quite a few months, and I know that the city attorney has been working with them and the ordinance committee, with the Lawrence Historic Commission and the ordinance committee to draft something, but it doesn't seem like either the ordinance committee and/or the city attorney has received from the Historic Commission what has been asked by either. If, I don't know if Counsel Madonado agrees with that, but I think that's the idea, that neither the ordinance committee nor the city attorney received the information requested. What was received was more vague, as in, "Hey, these are the districts and these are the names that are listed today," but not an actual language information.
So, Counsel President?
So, I'm just, to Counsel President's good mind, so I'm just, I just, I'm hearing two different things here, I just want to make sure I'm clear. If the city attorney received the background information from 30817 that was submitted to the clerk, a lot of that information, granted, it kind of rambles a little bit, but it gets to the point in one of the final paragraphs about what they're looking to do, and the purpose of what they're trying to accomplish. If he received that, I think that answers his question, which is, I'm not sure what is really being asked here, and what they're really asking is, "The LHC," this is from the LHC, the Historic Commission. "It requests the authority to prepare and name sites in the city's historical districts, also to review and approve such proposed names in the historical districts. The Historic Commission would be granted the authority of this set process that would then be submitted to city council for final approval." That is what they're looking, I think, what they're looking to do. I'm not sure if the city attorney received it. If he did receive it, maybe he didn't see that or overlooked it, I don't know. But that seems like what he's looking for. So, again, none of us are going to answer that question tonight. We don't know what he, well, we may know what he was saying, but I don't know if he read it.
Yeah. I don't have an answer. I don't think any of us at the table has an answer.
Clerk says that he, that he was submitted the entire file. So in the entire file, it would include that paper. So, it may be a follow-up. I mean, I...
I don't think any one of us has an answer for that question.
Counsel President?
I don't feel, I don't, I...
I don't feel comfortable myself. Counselor Rodriguez?
I just wanted to put that up there. When we, the ordinance committee voted favorably to recommend this item to the full council, when we, the city, the ordinance committee voted favorably to recommend this item to the full council, we also stated that we were waiting for the proper language of the ordinance before we order the public hearing. So, right now, we don't have that language.
So the suggestion by the clerk is...
Suggestion will be...
To order the public hearing.
Pending the language.
Pending the language, and we table the document here until the language is received. That way, the document, the public hearing is not published.
Up to...
As soon as you get it.
Yeah, I mean, I can contact all the concerned parties, John Sturz and Pataky.
Why would we table?
No, we don't have to table.
We remain to.
Not be, but we should...
We just publish it when we have the...
We just publish it when we have the language.
You could do either, whatever you prefer.
So if the, yeah, I don't think that...
We don't have to table.
Yeah. So, no, if the council wishes to table or order the public hearing?
There's order of public hearing pending the language.
What's the motion? Do we have a motion?
There's a motion not seconded.
Counsel President, this thing is not something that we are in a rush.
No.
Okay, so I will make the motion to table.
So motion to table?
Second.
It's been made and second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Rock call?
Counsel Reyes noted, Counsel Depeña.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Oh.
Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz noted, Counsel Madonado.
Yes.
Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez, Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, tabled, approved.
I'll follow up too with the city attorney, just as a...
That would be a good idea.
Document 33917.
33917 is a stop sign on two, two-way stop sign on Marvell and Oregon. It was put on the agenda by me personally, and we voted favorably to order the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Document 39917.
39917, this is Lawrence Fire Department petition to adopt General Law 14826 to adopt the Armored Sprinkles, and we voted favorably pending, with the ordinance committee voted favorably for this item to order the public hearing.
Motion has been made.
I would like to make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in, any discussions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Order of the ordinance.
Counselors, we have document 14616.
Yes.
Counselors, can I get a motion to table this document?
Yes. Can we, will we send to the ordinance committee? We're still working on it?
I'm resubmitting this document to the ordinance committee.
Okay.
14616.
Oh, by the way, Counsel President, can we send correspondence to the people involved on this item and that we're working on it?
Okay, so there's a motion to send correspondence to Superintendent Carrero.
The DPW director?
And the DPW director.
On regard to 14616.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Counselors, document 21416 is mobilityite LLC petition to grant off-location for the proposed new utility infrastructure facility. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 24216 is all gold license petition. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw?
Second.
All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 34216, resolution to boycott Maine. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm not driving there.
All those in favor please say aye.
No.
Aye.
Rock call, please.
It's funny, I support it, still.
The president's made a difference.
I don't know, but I support it, I support the resolution. Still support.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Madonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz noted, Counsel Abdu.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Oh.
Counsel Depeña.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
No, motion fails.
Thank you.
Maine's going to be happy.
Document 35516, transfer vendor license, food truck vendor review. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So move?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 1217, taxi livery licenses removal, renewal. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
So move?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 31017, one-gig skate shop, request to use a campaign on common on October 22nd. Can I get a motion to withdraw?
So move?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All business, there's none. Table matters. Ms. Fink, are you here for any table matters? No, we received an email from you, I believe, to take it next week, the next meeting, no?
That the homeless coordinators will not be present at this meeting and there were questions that needed to be answered, so...
To be invited for the next meeting in January? Sorry, we kept, I asked you earlier and I wasn't sure. I apologize. Okay, counselors, are there any other table matters that you wish to take, unless counselors want to discuss it at this point, okay? Okay, any other table matters that we should take off the table at this point? Seeing there's none. New business. Document 417, transfer vendor license, 71 May Street by Carmen Vias is going to the ordinance committee. Document 40117, handicap parking, 92 Greenwood Street, going to the ordinance committee. 40217, transfer vendor license, ordinance committee. Document 40317, handicap parking, ordinance committee. Document 40417, stop sign at the intersection of Foster and Andover Streets, ordinance committee. Document 40517, taxi livery license renewal for American Taxi, Livery Taxi, Merrimack Taxi, Popular Taxi, Go United Express Transportation, Rapid Transportation, Five Star Express Transportation, 809 Express Transportation, Dally Transportation, Integrity Medical Transportation, JC Transportation, Reliable Transportation, Quality Care Transportation, Town Liberty. Placed on the agenda by Detective Jose Flores is going down to the ordinance committee. Arlington Terrace, to be approved as a public way by myself, is going to the ordinance committee. Hazel Place, to be approved as a public way by Counsel Rodriguez and Mayor Rivera, ordinance committee. Document 40817, parking 172 Prosper Street, to board and disembark school bus by Counselor Ortiz, is going to the ordinance committee. Counselors, before we adjourn, I wish each of you happy holidays. In my case, Merry Christmas, as you celebrate with your families during the holidays. I hope that, you know, you will have a successful New Year's 2018. This is the last meeting for this year for the city council. I do not believe that the committees will be meeting in the next week. There's no new items for budget, no new items for personal or housing. Ordinance does have, but I don't think that...
On the 11th.
On the 11th?
Yeah.
So, Counsel Madonado, will you be here?
Next week?
Oh, and he said January 11th.
January 11th, I won't be here.
No, the next, so for next week, there's no meeting for ordinance? Oh, okay, no, that's what I'm saying.
January 11th.
Yeah, in January. So, I wish, I hope...
We're going to be here on the 2nd, so, and then the following meeting of the full council is going to be on the 16th, right?
I'm going, I'm going to ask the sitting counselors, who will be sworn in again on the 2nd. Do you want to meet on the 3rd? Traditionally, we have met on that Wednesday, right after swearing in, the Wednesday after. We met last, I remember when I was sworn in as council president, I was here the next day.
We were?
Yes, we were here the next day.
Okay.
So that will be up to the counselors that will be sworn in once again.
Ordinance on the 11th.
Okay, so if that's the case, we will meet on the 2nd, the 3rd week of January. Swearing in will take place here on, as per city chatter, at 7:00 PM. We will be sworn in at the city council chamber. On Friday the 5th, yeah? On Friday the 5th, we will have a celebratory swearing in at the location, Mr. Clerk? I'm spacing that.
It's going to be at the high school.
At the high school.
In the stadium, in the cold weather.
No, no, it's indoors. Indoors. So, I look forward to seeing all of you there, okay? If there's any questions, feel free to read the emails that have been sent by the clerk, and I look forward to seeing all of you on January 2nd. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel Ortiz, thank you, Counsel Madonado.